Well timed.
A minute to spare. Tick, tick.
Lauren's not coming?
She's on vacation.
Spread out.
Yeah.
Minute with a minute to spare.
Not that I. Next.
I'm offended.
A man with my.
It's like when guys go to movies so they don't sit right next to each other. Anyone like the room.
Russell.
Mark, happy birthday.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, it's four o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Will Kirkfree's called, roll.
Second.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Leo.
Ken. Ken.
Thank you. Bester.
Here.
B.
Here.
Louis.
Here. All right, I've heard from Lauren Stanton, this is the one week that she could get a vacation between athletic schedules. So, don't mind, I'll have her marked as excused. With that, are there any additions or deletions from the agenda? Not, all right. This is the time in our workshop where we allow for public comments. And at this time, it's on any agenda item, please. And if you'd like to comment, please come up, come on up to the podium. Introduce yourself and please limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody? Go ahead. You're fine.
The agenda appears further down, but I'm happy to.
On the agenda.
Go now.
It's all good.
I'm Scott Solberg. My wife and I and my family have the cottage at 720 Park Street. Which is the little blue place just south of Bald Head Park. Thank you for, for hearing us out. We've had the cottage since 2009. And we love Sagittuck. We're hoping to retire here in the not-too-distant future. The reason that I'm here, I know it's in your materials, I believe, some correspondence that we had with Mr. Harrier and then with Mr. Heiss. We'd like to make an offer to purchase the little leased parcel that we have of, along the riverbank. When we moved in to the place in '09, it was in disrepair. It, it, there's railroad tied steps. And I use a portable dock that I bring in and out each year. But I'd very much like to improve it. I'd like to build a, you know, have it landscaped, build nice steps, build a permanent dock. But we're very hesitant to do that when we're on a lease that, you know, we could lose at any point. So with Mr. Harrier, I discussed it with him years ago. Wrote to him just before COVID broke out. So the timing was not great. But we made an offer to purchase the spot for $25,000. Which was the amount that my wife's brother purchased a dock over by Tower. So we thought it was the going rate. But we're happy to pay whatever rate you all think is reasonable, if, if it's possible to acquire the parcel. If for some reason it's not part possible, we'd request that maybe we could get a longer term lease. So that we can then make the investment in improving the property. So unless you have questions, I'm happy to field them, but I appreciate again you hearing us out and taking it into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Christine.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm back. I was, thank you. I was glad to see on the agenda item that we're gonna have a special meeting regarding the pop-up patios. Obviously, I work on this a lot during the day and do a lot of research and look at other cities. And I know every city's different and all that stuff. But it seems that across the board, everyone is figuring out a way to do it. Even cities that didn't really have the outdoor space before, they're finding ways to do it. Just because of reasons that dining is changing. People still like to be outdoors. COVID is still here, as we kind of know in this town lately. That we still have to be cautious, I guess is the word. And that what I'm seeing as a business owner, obviously I can only speak for myself. Is that now that, you know, the stay-home order isn't in place anymore, people aren't supporting the restaurants as much as possible. They're traveling again. They're doing things of that nature. So takeout isn't as great as it was last winter, that it's going to be this winter. So we're gonna, going into next summer, we're still gonna be in a deficit of trying to figure out how to get all these restaurants, you know, all of us still thriving and open for business and all those things, ready for the spring and summer season. Now, I've gotten a lot of letters from people that own property here, that people that frequent Wix and other restaurants. I don't know if you want me to read them or if you'd like me to forward them to you. Okay, that's what I thought. I thought I would start there. But I have been kind of petitioning some people, petitioning other business owners also to be more involved with this decision, that it is a big decision. And what, when it comes to price, which I know that's probably gonna be the bottom line of this decision. I have the biggest spot from my research and what I'm looking, you know, just from other cities and all that. Is people pay by parking spots, some people pay by foot. The going rate is what I've seen, I could be wrong, is about $200 per parking spot per month. So you can do the math on however you want to figure that out. And to me, that's just dollars that we can clean up the sidewalk. You know, that's just money that we didn't have before for the city. And that it will go into a fund or however you smart people figure those kinds of things out. Why I just, you know, serve the people drinks. So, but I think there, you know, it's a two-way thing, you know, this is, that's a lot of money. And I mean, that's, I am 100% on board with paying for it, having more rules. You know, most peoples, from what I see the cities do, like, you have to be open six days a week and eight hours of operation. Is kind of what I'm seeing when I read people's like applications and the cities. And I know every city's different and I don't know how we'll ever come to an exact term. But that's just what I'm seeing is how they're making it work right now. Is it's $200 a thing with certain rules on being open, being occupied, lights, safety, all those things kind of stuff.
All right.
So, so I'm very happy that there'll be a meeting, can't wait to be a part of that. And I'm willing to help in any way possible.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Christine.
Anything else?
Nope, you're good for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
Anyone else, public comment? All right, with that, I'll back up and say welcome Russ Gardner to the table. Sorry about that.
No worries, thank you.
All right. Very good. All right, with that, we'll get into discussion items. And the first thing we have on our plate is Sadaba Annual Tree Lighting Ceremony and Annual Hootsville Christmas Parade.
Fun, fun. So you have a cover page for, for these items. It starts on page two of your packet. The backup goes all the way to page 11. Cover page and the recommended motion on Monday. It's a two-for-one, so we try to cover both events in one single motion. We have Gregory Muncie here. I think this is a traditional event. Madam Mayor, I don't know if you want him to speak to it now or totally up to, up to you.
Yep, you can give us a little rundown, Gregory.
Sadaba is pleased to bring the tree lighting event back to its original place that we had it for many, many years. At the Wix Park and the gazebo there. We want to thank Peter, our treasurer, for donating the tree for, again, for us, as he has many times over the years. We've had the tree lighting ceremony at different places for a short time, just years past, at the Rose Garden. Then we moved it to the, right next to the Maplewood, the park there with the big tree. Until that got too big to decorate, and then we went back to the park. So we're excited to have the event there this year. We just found out that we'll have the Holland Correll Quartet singing for us in town and throughout town. We'll also have live reindeer and hot chocolate and cookies provided by Mill Pond Realty. And the countdown, I've invited our wonderful mayor, our new mayor Garnett Lewis, and who will be counting down with Santa Claus. I'll be reaching out to our DPW Scott, who in the past has either lit the star for us. Or I know when he was with Bruce, he would run up there and light the star with us when he was working for Bruce back in the day. But back in 2019, he showed one of our volunteers how to do it, who lit it up and had, had the phone on while we did the countdown. So that the, the star was lit in unison. I'd also like to, in the past, when the, when the park was lit, we were able to, had access to the panels to light the park at the same time, where I had volunteers under the gazebo as well as the control box by the bathroom. That was set up during the countdown. So that the entire park and the light on top of Mount Bald Head came on in unison with the, with the tree. So we would like to have that again this year. And so I'll be reaching out to Scott with that, those details. And then, of course, the, I think we're putting them together and the parade, the annual Christmas parade, same as usual. We changed the route in 2019 to include Water Street, because we've got great businesses and restaurants on Water Street. So now the parade goes down both Water Street and Butler Street, covering almost the entire business district here in Sagittuck Douglas. And the parade route you'll see was included in the packet. And, and so we're looking forward to that as well. I've already been in cahoots with the, the Peppermint Brigade Girls. Holly Engel is stepping up, her mother-in-law, Liz Engel ran those girls for many years. And now Holly's gonna organize them. The Shovel Brigade, we had talked to Mike, he was at the Sadaba Board Meeting, and he said they're in it as well. And all of the regulars will be there, inner urban and the fire department and everyone else. So we're looking forward to that as well, so.
Might be your first parade, right? You'll get to experience this for the first time.
This will be.
It's gonna be quite a day in town. We've got lots of things going on, including the ugly sweater pub crawl that's headed, that's, that's headed, that funds a new local organization, a nonprofit organization here. That helps to purchase equipment, like band equipment for kids and things like that. So, so that'll be going on throughout town as well. The Shovel Brigade, just so you know, if you've not been to one, they drop their shovels in front of all the local pubs that participate. They run in the pub, they do a shot.
Oh boy.
And then they run back to their shovels. The Peppermint Brigade always requests to be very far away from them in line, because they're known for going at it with each other. So I don't know, if you guys have any questions, I know some of you are new. Now, of course, Russ, you've seen the parade for many, many years.
I've been in the Shovel Brigade.
Correct. And, and, but if any questions about, about those events, they're going to be pretty much as we've done them over the years, so.
Any questions for council?
Just quickly. It's, the event runs from one to, it's not on there anymore, but when, when is the actual light, tree lighting? What time do you think that is?
The actual tree lighting, the countdown for the tree lighting itself is 5:30. The event, because we have, this year we have live reindeer with visits with Santa at the park. We'll start that at three, and Santa will be hanging around till six o'clock. And till just right after the tree lighting ceremony.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd love for all of council to be there, if you have the time, that would be wonderful.
What's that?
I'd love for council to be there.
Yeah, love, love for all you guys to be there. And I encourage our Sadaba Board for all of them to be there as well, because I need help. And they'll be there, so.
All right.
Madam Mayor, for the parade, Scott Herbert, you and I have discussed getting a DPW truck, snowplow, some other vehicles in the parade. So we would invite council to join us and looks like it's gonna happen. We had a good, we had a good time doing it for the Fourth of July parade, so we have to do it for the holiday parade as well.
Correct. Cool.
Any other questions or?
Everybody good?
Okay.
All right, thanks, Gregory.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. All right, the next item is our pop-up patio special meeting.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, you and I discussed, given the high level of interest in the subject, that you probably should not cram the discussion into a normal workshop. We should have a dedicated special meeting for, for the topic. It would still be a public meeting, you know, still framed as a workshop where council's not gonna vote, you know, after the discussion takes place. It may take you a couple workshops to, to get through, through the items. So what we'd like to do is pick a date for, for council to attend. What we've been doing, and this is mostly over the summer, when restaurants were, were really busy in retail. We were hosting our meetings on Tuesdays at like 10:00 AM. That way the restaurants weren't open, you know, typically they were staying open until, on a Monday and they would close down on Tuesday. So most everyone, you know, it didn't seem like there was a problem with the Tuesday 10:00 AM timeframe. So one date that, that came out was December 7th. Okay, was that right? December 7th, Tuesday at 10:00 AM. Or we can send out a doodle poll, which is a way to gather a bunch of dates from, from everyone. But I don't know if everyone has their calendar here and could commit to Tuesday, Tuesday the 7th or, and or not.
Works for me.
Madam Mayor, Ryan, I would suggest we try to hold this meeting in the evening, as opposed to a Tuesday morning at 10:00 AM. One of the things I did here during the course of the campaign, such as it was, was that many people were interested in the pop-up patios, many of them liked them. But they also have some feedback in terms of how they might be improved for use for the next coming season. I heard no opposition to them, and I think it's important to get that resident feedback. I think a meeting up at the high school or a larger venue where we can get people together properly spaced out, I think would be helpful. If people feel they have a voice. Having 10:00 AM on a Tuesday for, for folks that work could be a little difficult.
So this is the first of probably several discussions that we'll have.
Yeah, totally, yeah, totally get the convenience of, of the meeting. Most of the meetings have been with the, again, restaurant and retail sector. Residents certainly have an input in this as well. So we're just throwing out, you know, we just, throughout a time, it's really up to council on what they, what they think is best.
This is not an action meeting, right?
Correct, not an action meeting, just a workshop. Like I said, it'll probably take a couple workshops to get, to get through this particular item and come to a final recommendation.
Yeah.
I would, I would suggest that maybe we have three listening sessions. One would be that Tuesday at the 10:00 AM, if that's what council wishes, and then have a couple listening sessions for residents.
Yeah.
During evenings at places that are not necessarily here at City Hall, that people could come in.
Yeah, I'd say we start with that at 10:00 o'clock and then go from there and see and expand. I'm gonna call on Christine, cause she's sitting here and she's made the effort.
Yeah, I mean, I, Russ, I like your idea, actually, because that way no one can, what's the word without saying slang word? Or, no one can complain that we didn't give the residents a voice, we didn't give, you know, because that, I'm like constantly telling people about this. Like even Mr. Fox, me and Mr. Fox are really good friends and I thought he was totally for it, it's not. So what he's still willing to discuss, let his voice be heard. And, you know, maybe things, you know, things that I didn't think of that the residents see more than I do. So I mean, if you want to start with just a 10:00 AM one with businesses and then open it up to whoever wants to go and just blast everyone and be like, this is your time. If you don't say anything, then this, you know, you might, so I like that idea too, of giving people. And sometimes people are scared to walk into City Hall.
Sure.
I tend to agree. I think this is one case where we actually have a little bit of a luxury of time, given that we've made it through the summer season. So I think hearing some business input, you know, when, when it's convenient for the hospitality businesses. And then a different time, at least one, to Russ's point, to allow citizens that worked during the day to come after work and, and share their views. Because you're kind of two different constituencies as well. So I think it's good, and I think, you know, if, if we have to do one in December and another one in January. Let's, let's take the time and do this right. I think a lot of people are invested in it, so let's make sure we hear from everybody, because it's, you know, there's gonna be some give and take out of it, I think.
Yeah, I would, I would also suggest that we try to get on Mr. Muncie's radio schedule, as well as Mike Johnson's show, to kind of promote this from the city standpoint, as well some social media channels. I think it's a great opportunity to get the word out about this.
I'll have the mayor of Sagittuck on this Sunday.
There you go.
But also have the mayor of Douglas on as well, they'll be co-hosting.
Oh my god, okay.
So. Word, you can't over-communicate this.
Yeah. So let's start with December the 7th at 10:00. And really encourage our business owners, I'm gonna call on you Christine to help with that. And then go from there for a next for an evening.
We'll, we'll put this back, if it's okay with you, Madam Mayor, we'll put this back on the agenda for Monday. And any new ideas come up as far as venue and time for the evening session. And that's pretty common to have two different sessions for working folk and, you know, people work different schedules. So makes sense.
All right. Everybody good? All right, very good, okay. Next up, resident survey.
Yeah. This is on page 13, Madam Mayor and Council. And at our last strategic planning session in May. One of the items that was discussed was getting out a resident survey in advance of your next strategic planning session. Just collect resident feedback, business owner feedback, stakeholder feedback on what's important to them in the city. And so what Kate has done for us, she reached out to the city of Celine. And I think the, the host of our last strategic planning session also worked with the city of Celine. And they put this survey together. And so what Kate did was she tweaked it ever so slightly. And surveys are always a little tricky, but the, the basic premise of this is to keep it pretty broad, not get too specific. Not have too many questions, wherein people don't even want to fill it out. I was filling out a 20-minute survey the other day and was like, lost track of time, like, didn't even complete it. I was like, oh shoot, I was like 10 minutes into this thing. Anyways, so we tried to keep it as simple as possible. So we just, you know, laid out some, some broad categories, some broad questions. We'd be happy to take feedback if you want to email us between now and, but we do want to lock this in. I should also mention that the mayor and I had discussed that we'd like to have, or at least she would like to have, the strategic planning session before the new year. So sometime in December. And to kind of move this item along quickly. And with that, we'd like to get the survey out as soon as possible. So we'd like to dial it in on Monday. So I'll just leave it there and take, take any feedback now. And again, we can collect your feedback in advance of Monday's meeting and kind of share that information on Monday as well.
Ken, thoughts? Looks like you have a thought.
No, no, I did have a thought, but it's inside my head.
All good. Council comments?
Madam Mayor, I would just thank Kate for the work that's been done on this. I read through this and I think that the questions are very thoughtful and it's good to build off another community's experience with this as well. The, the other thing I would add here is that I think there's a great opportunity, I think, to, and begin thinking about how do we involve some of the local students? Because there's an AP Gov class up at the high school that I think is looking for opportunities to engage, you know, send students to council meetings and things like that. I think there's opportunities, so just food for thought is, there's, how could we get some help from students that could be engaged on things like this? Not necessarily just project alone, but just, just a thought, so.
Other thoughts?
Appreciate the work. Yeah, I'm, Mayor, I think the two very important pieces for me are, because I think our last session was quite successful. Is to have a facilitator in place for that meeting. And to have it in the right type of venue where we all can get together, do some whiteboarding. You know, have that kind of space where we can sort of really kind of roll up our sleeves and work at it. I mean, the yacht club venue worked really well. It allowed us to get together, it allowed us to, you know, do some kind of brainstorming, whiteboarding and, and, you know, really sort of get creative. So I, I think we need to make sure we have the right venue and the right facilitator to make sure it's as good as our last one was.
Other thoughts?
Oh, I'm good.
I know Mark's excited for another strategic.
Well, you're wearing a mask, you never know.
All right, very good. Kate, thanks for your time. I, I look forward actually to seeing the responses. That's always what's, for me, is always fun about doing these. And I know Ken and I have a similar background in survey, kind of data collection. And it's always really interesting to see what feedback you get from folks when given the opportunity. So I think it'll be nifty.
Yeah, I, you know, and I think the, the brevity of the survey is gonna be very helpful, because people don't want to get involved in 100 questions. Yeah. So I thought it was a good instrument.
All right, very good. So any feedback, if, if between now and Monday, if you could really quickly, maybe even, what's today, Wednesday, before the end of the day, Friday, if you have any additions or something. I would send them to Ryan, would that be the best way?
Kate.
Kate, send them to Kate. All right, there you go. All right, excellent. All right, hazard mitigation plan. That's right, you gotta go off class, have fun. Yeah. Mitigation.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, this is an item, this is on page 16 of your packet, actually page 16 through 61. So hopefully you all studied this very, very hard. This is a plan that came out first in, in 2014. And so what staff is recommending is that we just adopt the existing hazard mitigation plan. Really what was highlighted in the plan for the city of Sagittuck was concerns with natural geological processes. So anything from erosion to floodwater to the harbor. Lot of interesting stuff in there. Probably at some point in the not-too-distant future, we'd, we'd probably want to update this for the city of Sagittuck. But given where we're at with it right now, staff is just recommending re-adopting it. What, what that would, would do for the city of Sagittuck is we'll make you grant eligible for FEMA funds and some other trickle-down funds through, through the federal government, through the county to, to us, so.
As I recall, and Ken can help me with this, when we had our high flood issues and we had the FEMA folks here. This, I remember Scott Corbin from Algen County referencing this document specifically. And the fact that we have it and the necessity of updating it, I think is critical.
We have drawn on these funds.
Yeah.
They asked. The one I specifically memorized would be at the South Maple Street. If you ever been up around the turn, it's quite a drastic drop. And we had some severe storms that actually eroded this, the whole road and exposed the sewer line. With joint efforts with Sagittuck Township, but that was $300,000, $400,000 project that we pretty much had it all funded through FEMA.
That's, that's.
So that's a good indication of, of something that you, of it affects Sagittuck.
Yeah.
But that was an experience we, we did have.
Just a general question along those lines, is this something that we could pull on for Wendy's issue?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I'll just make a little.
I'm surprised you got that question. Okay. Any other questions regarding this mitigation plan?
If approval, just more of a comment, I was kind of surprised, and being the new guy, we threw everything, so. All the references to earthquakes in here.
Oh, I know.
I'm trying to remember a, yeah, I do remember one earthquake in Sagittuck back in, in shifting the house. That was a long time ago. So kind of interesting to read what other communities are thinking of issues for them flooding and earthquakes.
Yeah. That, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
That is an interesting one, that's actually the first thing that came to my mind is like seismic activity, okay, who knew? Where I think, so we talked about that actually at length, the emergency management director. And I think where that was born out of was there's a, a power plant in the area. Yeah, and so any little seismic shift could really do some damage to, to the power plant, so that's.
Palisades. Nuclear plant.
Exactly, so that was the genesis for the seismic activity.
Oh, well.
Which I think Palisades is either shut down and in the process of being.
Next year, next year they're gonna begin the decommissioning process, but then they're still cooked down in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey guys, it's, it's Holly here. I, can you hear me?
Yes.
I was just, out of curiosity, I was wondering why Holland, the city of Holland was included? I mean, it was great to sort of see their perspective, but is it just because that's a large population center? Obviously, it's not in Algen County, I just thought it was interesting.
Portion of the city of Holland in Algen.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, up to 32nd Street.
Right, 32nd Street's the dividing line between.
Yeah.
Did you hear that, Holly? There's, we're talking about there's a portion of Holland in Algen County.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. I, I was just, just wondering. Thanks, guys.
Actually, that makes Holland the largest, that portion of the city of Holland is the largest. Actually, that makes Holland the largest, that portion of the city of Holland is the largest tax revenue source for Algen County.
Is it?
Yeah, because as Thirty Second Street extends both ways, you got a lot of water for Lake Michigan property in the far west. And the further you get east past thirty-one is you got all those industrial properties. Hayworth is a completely not, you know, almost entirely in Algen County. Right. So they're by far the largest tax revenue base.
Got it.
In that, that commissioner who usually has that area, that decided a lot of cloud at the county. Even though they probably get fewer services than anybody else in the county.
Wow, very.
He has a tendency to, at least when I was.
Interesting. Very interesting.
Thanks, Holly. All right.
Thanks so much for that. Thank you.
All right. Good? All right, we'll move forward with that and take on that motion on Monday. All right, Oval Beach operations.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, I was informed by Councilman, I'm not used to saying it, Councilman Duckin, that this time of year, the city goes over their operations and expenses for, for the park. And so we presented that information to you. We have a graph that Peter, our treasurer, put together. The overall takeaway is that it was a very lucrative year. Three, the, the net revenue was three hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, largely due to not having enough staff. So although we're making a lot, we're making a lot of money, we certainly took our, our hits and criticisms for not being able to keep up with our amenities, what have you. But here are the numbers. This will be useful information as you get into your strategic planning session. Start talking about your, your general funds, your, you know, year-over-year revenue versus expenses. So I, I don't know what else gets discussed because this is my first go around with the, with this being an informational item. So, so happy to take any questions.
So this dramatic drop in expenditures is almost all due to the lack of staffing and the ability to get staffing.
Yeah. And, and there was a, you know, there were like in twenty fifteen, sixteen, there were some major improvements made. So, you know, you see the expenses in, in that particular year. And I think there were some moderate improvements made leading up to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. No improvements to speak of in, in this fiscal year. Everything was kind of handled through our parks and public works staff, the staff that we did have. Right. So, yeah, it's mostly attributable, attributed to lack of major projects and, yeah, not having adequate staffing. And you do, we, we do list the, the park expenses. And so we did try to bring in, you know, extra portalets. Probably something that we'll continue to do into next year. But, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Just to kind of add on that, I, I'd like to see if we could get, I don't know if Peter's on the line or not, but I'd like to see a detailed expense report in terms of how the expenses were assigned to the various parks, as well as what the line items were, knowing that salary is probably the biggest item, but like to know where else money's being spent. So.
As far as Oval Beach or in general?
Uh, just in general for the parks, but Oval Beach especially. And it really, anyway, I'll save the other item for council comments. So, thank you.
Will Peter join us Monday and take us through this?
I will pass this long term. We can have him join us. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think in the past, what he, what he's done, whether he has time to do it for the next meeting, then he would take the projected or budgeted line item expenses in the, for the fiscal year budget. And then he would compare those to actual, it's kind of hard because the fiscal year runs over parts of the next coming season. Operational season, but that's kind of how we, if I remember right, that's how it was presented in the past.
Yeah.
And I think you're looking for kind of where, where the.
Where the money's spent.
Park maintenance is, you know, taking place.
Yeah, just more of a line item kind of X mile span.
I don't think I've ever seen anything for each individual park.
Yeah. Well, let's see what we get.
Yeah. What he comes up with, yeah.
Get down to the level of detail which we.
He's pretty specific about Oval Beach.
What, what I would ask, just to back up a little bit, is I want to make sure we focus specifically on Oval Beach for this item. And then top of Peter about anybody who's interested in a deep dive on a budget like that. Because he's always been in the past very helpful in sitting down with any of us or, and he'll draw it out five years past, projected, and it's really a great way to look at the budget. And that way he can organize it in a way that works for him. And anybody who wants to participate in that can then do that. So does that sound fair?
Yeah, it, it does. I think, I think the focus is on the Oval Beach itself is correct. I, I would like either a, a view from Scott Herbert or maybe you get, Ryan, get a view from Scott Herbert on any areas of maintenance that have been neglected or any areas where we do need to be investing more. In it, you know, obviously staffing has been a huge issue. But if there's other things we need to be doing to, you know, to, I mean, it's great to have this surplus, but I think it feels like the gap is not right. You know, you know, people are paying a lot to, to, to go to that beach. And we need to hold it up to a really high standard.
Yeah. And as I recall, last year at our strategic planning, Oval Beach was one of the major projects. That was my note, you know, perhaps identifying a, a Noble Beach project or projects that could be basically supported like that. Might as well take the initiative.
Yeah.
Thinking about.
Yeah. Yes, yes. That works. One thing that I have not been able to find specific to Oval Beach is a, a master plan. So I've, I've gone through some of the parks plans, but I cannot find anything specific to Oval Beach. And I think that would probably be a wise investment for the city to actually lay out a strategic plan for improvements, which then you could utilize for, for grants, but not only Oval Beach, but Mount Bald Head area, just kind of coupling those two.
Yeah. I think it's important to consider, you know, that whole natural area of Oval Beach, Mount Bald Head is one recreational area.
Okay.
You know, because of the, so intertwined with the shows.
And we recall doing an assessment a couple of years ago that identified things at Oval Beach, like the concession stand and so on.
Storage building.
Yeah, and all that. It's, it's got to be someplace.
I did find that the project was, was that what it was?
Yeah, you found, I think you referenced that you weren't particularly impressed with.
I was not. No. I did find that was what you were referring to, Ken. Yeah, I was not, not, not impressed. I mean, they had, to your book, they had listed improve the bathrooms and create a storage area, but it wasn't any type of strategic five-year plan, which the city could chip away at. It was pretty low level, in my opinion. Okay, so.
That's the challenge.
Just, just to Mark's comment, I mean, you and I learned that, that there is a pot of funding available that can be deployed in that natural area that we just need to identify.
Yes.
Uh, uses for.
Yeah, that's correct. And I'll, I'll present that information as well. Thanks, Scott, for mentioning that. That's through the Holland Zeeland Foundation. And that's specific to the harbor natural area. But that doesn't mean that it cannot be used to improve the general area, including Oval Beach entrance, restrooms, what have you. So we can talk about that. Right now, you know, just for full transparency, what's available to the city is around hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that you all could spend right now for the natural harbor area, but there's more money in that account. So that's just the interest that's been gained over the years.
What's the name of that fund?
Harbor Natural Area, and that's again through the Holland Zeeland Foundation.
It was funded through the purchase. It was in addition to the purchase. I think most of it came from the DNR trust fund grant, which paid for about half of the property. I think it's almost, it might be required for certain sized projects through the trust fund that you set up some type of an endowment or, you know, funded people. Neglect this funds to states invested in the community.
All right. Very good. Looking for, so will Peter be here or you'll just take us through this?
So I'll work it out with Peter. Hopefully he can join us and I'll ask him to reach out to Russ and, you know, kind of start working with them on the level of detail that we have available.
I'm a numbers guy like he is, so we.
I always come from it from that perspective.
Yeah, we have fun with it. So looking forward to it.
Very good. All right. Very good. With that, I'll move us on. Project manager position.
Yeah, thanks. Listed as project manager position on the agenda. In the cover page, I have it listed as project coordinator position. Where I, I would like to recommend that it be called the project coordinator position. So a little background on this is that, as I understand, the city administration in Sagertuck has discussed creating a, a new position to assist with the city projects and administration for several years now. I went through the server. I see that Kirk Carrier did a, a lot of research in creating an assistant city manager position. Uh, it's some of the background information. I, I listed his research and kind of the salary range. That, that goes back to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And then during our strategic planning session, one of the things that came out at the very top was that the city needs to hire adequate support staff to, to carry out priorities of the city. So certainly a lot of new projects going on, a little backlog of projects. And the assistance would, it's greatly needed, in my opinion. And as far as funding the position, that would be funded through the, the general fund. The funding is sustainable. The park revenue can be utilized because park revenue goes into the general fund. And so that would be the, the funding mechanism. And so there's an attached job description. This goes over the basic duties of, of the position. It's all about better communication and research. And I think that the assistance that we have received through, through our internship has, has proved to be very valuable. And I'd like to see that continue.
Council comments or questions? Clarifications?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I completely agree with the need for this. I've had, I've, I've had some conversations with, with the city manager about just different projects and some ideas that I have that I think council might want to consider going forward. But I also think about the need that the DPW as well. So I'm just wondering how the DPW superintendent might be looking and say, hey, great that you get assistance. Where's my, because there's always a bit of a, you know, bit of, I don't want to say tension, that's not the right word, but you know what I mean, right?
I do.
So where's the best place to spend this money? Is it here at City Hall? No disrespect against the city manager or with the DPW. So I, you know, I'm just trying to think through that processes because I wasn't involved in, in the initial discussion around this. And then also I'd like to see kind of what the list of projects is that we might have this potential person work on. And certainly I support the need for additional assistance. Absolutely agree with that a hundred percent. And we should be driving to attract the best and brightest to this job. That's my idea of how we can maybe do that. So, because it's really, we've got a great staff and we've got some really good new hires. Let's continue on that path and let's really try to make this the best and brightest we can get. It's a challenging hiring environment, so we got to be good. We got to be really good at this.
Yes, I can address, I can address some of those. Kind of working backwards through, through your questions. The list of projects, probably the most simplest of projects was through the strategic planning session. We still need to set up a time to kind of go through that list of projects and where the prioritization was. We're going to be doing that again very soon. Anyways, and then the separate and aside from, from that list, I did share kind of an internal list with Madam Mayor and Mayor Pro Town of kind of actionable projects and kind of an internal to-do list. I think that's about eighty, eighty items long. Happy to share that with you as, as well, just to kind of show you like, you know, once we get through priority ones, we have twos, threes, fours, and fives. And so happy to share that information with you. In regards to DPW, eve- even rising higher than the need for city administrative support was DPW support. And that also came through the strategic planning session. So we did actually add one full-time equivalent to Scott's team this year. So he was given a, a new, a new person, which he's, he's found to be extremely valuable. And that decision was made after trying to hire seasonal employees. To your point, it's been very difficult. Hiring a, a full-time personnel is, is much easier. And so that's been accomplished. So he feels very comfortable. And I won't speak for Scott. He can, he can weigh in on the subject. But we did provide the support to Scott that he, he requested at the strategic planning session.
Presumably this, this position could also be supportive to DPW-type projects.
Well, one hundred percent. Yeah, yeah. So it's not, yep, exactly. And that's, that's what's happening with our current intern. She's the one that's pushing out, well, between Jamie and, and Kate, pushing out information on like the Campbell Road project and other various projects that we have. And she, you know, takes calls and helps Scott do his, do research. And he's, she's also, you know, she's also supporting Department of Public Works. So it's not just city administration that this position.
So, yeah, I mean, it's, so we're, we're hiring a team player, not somebody that's going to be ring-fenced. So I think it's, it's great. Everyone's working well as a team. So let's just move ahead in that spirit. Yeah.
I'd be interested to see where the costs break down actually specifically, because even though you, you know, your quota salary top range of fifty-two thousand, you got to add about forty percent of that to cover benefits, taxes, like all the other, other costs. All of a sudden, you think you're having a fifty thousand dollar expense and you got seventy-five or eighty thousand.
Yeah.
That's about a half of, not a half, but it's probably about a third of a mil. So, you know, and I'm not saying it's unnecessary. I'm saying you start taking money from one area, spending it somewhere else. It's less money that's available in all these other projects that we, you know. So, and I'm sure you understand. I'm sure I did more information on that because I'm hoping we're not ready to vote on this Monday.
I'm hoping that you'd be pretty close.
Yeah, I'd like us to. Ken, any comments?
No. Well, we'll see what information we get between.
Well, yeah, we'll get you the, the position fully loaded. But that looks like you're right, probably closer to seventy to seventy-five grand. And we can do that. And yeah, you're right. I mean, so you're taking, if you're taking money from the park revenue, obviously that's less money that you can spend on projects. So.
Yeah, so one observation that I have, you know, it's coming from a business perspective is sometimes you have to spend money to make some money. In our case, as a city, we have the opportunity, there's been a lot of grant funding out there in various ways and pockets. And not having the time to go after those has, has limited us. And those, pursuing those opportunities and getting grant funding then begins to supplement that type of a position. I've seen it in the university environment while I've, where I've worked. You have to have a dedicated person to work on projects. It's absolutely necessary. And ever since I joined council, you know, we, we all knew how busy Perk was trying to get all that work done. And now Ryan, and it's, there's just not enough time in one person.
Well, yeah, I, I agree totally with that. And, you know, I, we've had the eighty-some projects on our list for as long as I've been around here on council. And we get, we do very well on the top tier of projects and our highest priorities. But we never dipped down into some of those things. It's just been hanging around for a long time. And, and probably, you know, many of them would be fundable, but we just haven't had the ability to look into that. So I'm supportive of this.
Yeah.
You know, we may be entering a period of opportunity with infrastructure funding becoming available. So I do think having somebody that's skilled and that's chasing down some of this, uh, that's an opportunity worthwhile.
Yeah, it's going to be there. I, I was on MML call Monday and the state still has not allocated the five billion dollars in CARES, CARES Act money down to the municipalities. So that is still sitting there. And then now through the infrastructure bill, what's going to be coming our way on top of that. And even in our case, where we tend to be in a better financial position, we will still see some of that come down to us. And to have a person helping to direct and get that will be huge. I read today forty-five municipalities chose not to take that CARES money. And I was like, pickups? It's just that it's an opportunity that I think will fund it. So. So anyway, without belaboring yet. Ryan will, Ryan will come back to us with benefit portion of that. Ryan will come back to us with the benefit portion of that.
I think we could live with it.
Yeah.
All right, so yeah.
And the list of projects.
Yeah, I got a few things. One, I want to bring something hot off the presses. And Ryan was in attendance at this site visit at Mount Bald Head on Tuesday night. Scott was there, myself, Eric. Eric too, from the, from the history center as well as Kate was there to join us. And we had about an hour walk-through at the radar station. And her name is Jennifer Mattson. She's a historic preservation consultant. Ryan had a chance to meet her. Her husband Greg Metz is an architect, and they were kind enough to come up at Eric's invitation. So we did that and she is interested in working or at least making a proposal to kind of help the next steps of the process here. So really where the group is at is that, you know, we've gotten all of the major exterior work completed except for a fencing contractor, which is turned out to be a real. Scott can speak to it. Brian's been knowledgeable to it. It's a big real challenge getting some of this next work. But anyway, the exterior work is done for the winter. So it's just ready to it's good for the winter. So now we really start to look ahead and say, okay, what's next for this? My personal opinion is that the group is going to need some professional assistants on that process. Again, we were introduced Jennifer through Eric. So this literally just hit my inbox yesterday. So just want to put that in everybody's hands and take a look at that as well. Oh, perfect. Wow, great. So I just want to put that in everybody's hands. It can take a look at that. I think it is something worth considering. The work group is a very experienced bunch, but there's areas of help that we could use some outside assistance on. So would be interesting that council's feedback on that. I also want to acknowledge Cindy and Matt Petersons. They have come through. They have been wonderful to work with, especially Cindy's met with Eric. She's actually allowed numbers to work with to go through, RJ Peterson, that's RJ Peterson's guardian law, to go through his archives and collection. He's got opious amounts of materials. They have been more generous in terms of offering up what they have. If you're interested in having these materials returned to public view. So there's much more to be explored there, but I just wanted to now advance. Then signs, we had some, we had some discussion regarding the signs, temporary signs at the top and bottom of Mount Bald Head. Those sites have been modified to remove names, except for the work group, but now it's a city side. So we don't run into any issues regarding the city where we're at. So I just want to thank you again, council, for your support. Another resolution that council passed today asked that we have a report back with recommendations by the end of the calendar year. We're not going to hit that goal. So we'll ask for some latitude to leave that out a little bit. But we want to keep this train moving. It's had a lot of momentum. We've got a pretty good head of system now. I'd like to see. So. Okay. Thank you. The other thing is I want to also ask Peter, who's not on the call, I'd love to see the summer parking lot revenue report for both lots, both bank and the.
We don't have anything to do with the bank.
Okay.
That's strictly a school.
So the money flows through for the SCA lot in the city. Money from the bank lot. So I'd like to see some reports on that. I'm not sure when that's normally provided.
Yeah, we see that.
When do we normally see that?
Yeah. Do we have the county commissioner coming to us regularly?
Last, not nearly as much as with COVID, but I would say quarterly. I have one question for us. Reviewing this comment saying that your contact Jennifer was gathering information structural engineer. Did they have the access to the structural engineering report that was the city had?
The.
But I, I know it's not really current, but it can't be that, you know, I would say ten to fifteen years.
Yeah, my good question. One report that we have been working with in this 2014 was done by environmental assessment report, some information regarding structural conditions, and that had been provided to her as well.
That someone.
There is there another?
I thought so. We actually did. They tested the whatever they do on the metal, the tower itself. It's some type of mineralogy type of study. Useful also, I think the contract base. I'm thinking Flusmida did it. It was done about the same time.
Was it? Yeah, we'd love some of that information. It would be extremely helpful.
If that exists.
For the report from 2014, there were five things that were in that report. Do nothing up to destruction of a building. And then everything in between, including the basement. So it's more environmentally focused as opposed to structurally focused. Building does have issues.
Uh, no comments.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I really enjoyed being able to meet together, but, you know, we have to look out for each other. And, you know, I, I feel terrible if anybody in this body got sick because we didn't leverage technology when we could leverage technology. So. Yeah.
All I can say is I barely got to know you.